On our regular agenda for August the 10th, we have already had our invocation and pledge. We've already called an order. We've already established a quorum. So we'll go down on the line item there for the board to approve the agenda. So do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Okay, the next item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of our regular scheduled meeting that was held here on July the 27th, 2023 at 7:00. The clerk has prepared those minutes. Those are available on the website. Is there any modifications or changes of the minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented by the clerk?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion or comment on the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented by the clerk. Okay, the next item that we have is our, is our public hearing on ordinance O-04-23 to amend Chapter 4 of the Alcohol Beverage of the Code of Walker County, Georgia. The citizens, the voters back in November of last year's voted to pass distilled spirits in packaged sales in Walker County. And so then this body was tasked to come up with the rules and regulations, or as we refer to as the ordinances for that. It was a good time to go back and review all of the Chapter 4 of the alcohol beverage because we, those things had been added to over time by different administrations and there was a lot of repetitive language that needed to be taken out. So we didn't say the same thing three or four times. It's just saying it over and over. And also there was just a few clerical type, typo type things that come about. But you'll see from our last public hearing, anything that is in red or anything that has been struck through is what's been modified since our meeting two weeks ago. So we had some good comments, some suggestions, some additional input by the board. And that's why we have these public hearings is to get input to refine the, the language of this. And so from the last meeting two weeks ago, if you look on the second page, the definition was added for what an alcoholic beverage means, what that is to define that. That was made as a, just an enhancement there, just for clarification. And then let me find here which section. Sorry, I didn't have these marked. Okay. All right. In section 4-200, limits, limitation on number of licenses, Section F was added. All holders of license issued here under must after the issuance of such license for business for the establishments referenced to, referenced to in the license within 90 days if located in an existing building, or 365 days if construction has not begun on the building as the date of the license is approved. So that was a question that had come up is if someone obtains a license, how quickly do they need to do something? So if it's an existing building, you need to be open within 90 days. If it's a new construction, 365 days is what's being added. Failure to open the license establishment as reference to within such period shall serve as a forfeiture and a cancellation of the unused license and no refund of the license fee shall be made to the license holder. So if you go and get a license and you don't meet those requirements of deadlines, you're forfeiting your license and forfeiting the fee.
Can I add something, Mr. Chen?
Yes.
And I think that we've kind of kicked it around, talked about it a little bit too, but that's to, to get the process started. 90 days could push, but that in an existing structure, you've got to get the process started and be, be underway in that 90 days. It's, you know, that, there's a little leeway there. Same way with a new construction, 360, you know, it may take, it supply chain, it could take a little longer, but we just want to clarify that those are, those are timeframes that you must be well underway in, in getting there, you know, and that would be exceptions that we would look at, you know. So just wanted to clarify that.
Making progress.
Yeah.
Good point.
Yeah, making progress.
Very good point. Okay, letter G, license holder of a retail package sale of distilled spirits shall require that the alcoholic beverages purchased be placed in a opaque, I guess I'm saying.
Opaque.
Opaque container before being removed from the store, provided however that the subparagraphs shall not apply to the purchase of a 12-pack or large containers. H, no license holder for retail package sales of distilled spirits will be granted an additional license until they have been open and operational for a minimum of 365 days. So you can get one license, but if you want a second license, you've got to be open in that first license for a full year. You've got to be open and operational is what that's referring to there. Okay, in section 4-201, the type of establishments that were permitted, this was where we had some, some good discussion last time of trying to define what is to be sold. And so we struck, distilled spirits should be sold at retail except in establishments maintaining at least 90% of the floor space or storage area in a manner of which devoted principally to the retail sale of the products that are alcoholic and, and located in zoning districts that are permitted for such use. This section shall not apply for locations that are distilleries or microbrewers, brewers. So it was modified to say A is no distilled spirits by package sale, B sold in retail except in, one, retail establishments devoted exclusively to the retail sale of alcoholic beverages by the package. Two, retail establishments in which space has been set aside devoted exclusively to the retail sale of distilled spirits by the package, with ingress and egress provided directly to and only to the exterior of the building in which the facility is located and not to any other enclosed part of the building in which the facility is located except as provided in subsection A 3 of this section, or in a hotel or motel where every public entrance to this use shall be from the lobby, hallway, or other exterior, interior portions of the primary use structure. Exception, nothing in this section shall prohibit a retail or sale within these establishments of liquor, commodities, or mixers normally used in the preparation and serving of distilled spirits. So we had quite a bit of good discussion about that is just trying to better define that you can sell those mixers and commodities that are in relationship to distilled spirits. And then we struck, just for clarity, no license shall be issued to retail sales of distilled spirits at any establishment licensed or operated, server motor fuel dispensing, tobacco products lottery. So you still can't sell those, but that B got revised just to bring more clarity that if you're selling liquor, it has to be commodities, liquid commodities and mixers normally used in the preparation and serving of distilled spirits. Those are the only things that you can, can sell in that premise. C, each building must meet international building code standards and B, in the minimum of 1,500 square feet. D, in the building is attached to another commercial building, the wall on either side must be a solid with no access to the other. So those were some modifications. Let's see if there's anything else. So as we go through this, as I'm looking for other things, just in the time here, at this time, we'll allow one person at a time to come up and state their name. If you've got any additional comments about this, ordinance, the, the goal or the intention that we're striving for tonight is to take additional comments and see if the board is comfortable enough of taking action on this tonight by voting on this tonight because it is an action item on our agenda. If the board feels like that there's more work that needs to be done on the language or there's suggestions that come out tonight that they want to take a closer look at, then we would move just to table this until the next meeting and then it could be brought back up. So as we go through this process, the board will make those decisions. So is anyone that would like to speak in regards to Chapter 4 of the alcohol beverage? It would be only for this topic. Yes, sir, right here in the blue shirt, if you'd like to come forward and please state your name.
My name is Mittal Patel and I own, I used to own Alpine Stores with Randy Walker. I have read briefly the rules and regulations. The license cannot be transferred to other names, is that correct?
No transfer.
No, doesn't allow any transfers.
I think yes, it's.
So my question would be, I'm just thinking as a part of the business. So if somebody builds a building, spend nowadays to get the liquor store going, it's going to cost you around $2 million if you have a new building. And the liquor store building, minimum square footage will be divided by minimum 5,000 in that vicinity. Then what happens if, if a family invests that much money and a person who had the license dies? What, what, what would be the repercussions in that case?
That's a good question.
Yeah, it's a good question.
It's not transferable because they haven't, you have to satisfy the requirements just like you're a new applicant. So there are certain requirements. There are background checks, there are different items. So someone who may be purchasing it, they would simply go through the same application process and if they qualify, then they may qualify for a permit. But that, that's very common that these licenses are not transferable for that very reason. I mean, it, the law has certain prohibitions on if you're a convicted felon and, and other items. And so we're just following the, the state law primarily on that.
See, I do agree that, see, governments rule, governments should provide for business to flourish and they have to provide safe environment and they'll make sure that no criminals are getting the licenses. And I 100% agree with the criminal background check and, and all that. But prohibiting somebody, it's like buying a car and you buy a car, you cannot sell it.
Let me, let me interject something. So I was trying to understand. So if, if you, if you had a, had a store and you said, first of all, someone passed away, if somebody died.
Yeah.
Well, I think in that situation, as, as David said, you know, of course whoever, the, the family member or whoever would be the inheritant or what, would have to make application and go through the process. Not going to ship, you know, there may be a, I would, I would think that there would probably be a, a lapse in time, especially if there was an unexpected death, to get, to get qualified, but I don't think it would be any, anything that would take a long time. As far as, you know, like sell, like you're saying about selling a car, you buy a car and you drive it a while and you want to sell it. Well, if you apply for an, you make application for a license and are granted a license and you open the business and you decide you want to sell it, then, then the person that you're going to sell it to needs to go down and make application for that license and, and do that prior, you do that, you know, like you're doing negotiation, guy comes, hey, I want to buy your store. First thing you do, you've got to go fill out the application, get, satisfy the state requirements and, and the other requirements. And then, then you wouldn't be able to, basically, it'd be a new, a new, you wouldn't be, what am I trying to say?
It's like if you're buying a new house and you want to make sure you've got your financing before you can close.
Yeah, yeah.
So a person would need to apply for the permit, make sure they can get the permit.
Yeah, before they, before you sell it to them or before they bought it, you know.
So there is no restriction here that, for example. Let's say if I, if I got a license and I up on a store, I build, build a store and for down the road, I want to sell it because I want to retire or whatnot. That does not prohibit other person getting the license or transferring the license. And I, I really want to make sure that the, the government has to make sure that there's no criminal background or whatnot.
Yeah.
If that passes, then that license can be transferred to the other person.
If they, if they made the requirements, if they met the requirements, would that not be correct counsel if they?
Yeah, so the, the Beverage Commission Board will, will evaluate every applicant. As you're aware, alcoholic beverages, whether it's beer, wine, or distilled spirits, is one of the most highly regulated businesses that you can be in. And there, there are pluses and minuses in that business. And I, I believe that most people who own liquor stores recognize that that is just, it's just one of the requirements and one of the, you know, pluses and minuses of opening or establishing a business. It's not that the business can't be sold. It's not that a relative can't take over. It's just that the relative has to qualify like, like anyone else.
Mr. Gottlieb, I have a question.
Okay.
Are the licenses sold exclusively in an individual's name or can a corporation, an LLC or an S corporation purchase a license or is it strictly an individual's name?
Well, I believe that a license, that's, that's a good question. I know that stores are frequently owned by LLCs, corporations as opposed to individuals. But when you make application, even if it is in a corporate name, the background is done, you have to identify.
A responsible partner.
The general manager.
The principals are.
Right. And, and they're the ones that go through the background check. I mean, they will also look at the history of ABC Corporation. But in addition to ABC Corporation, it's who is the principal holder of the majority of the stock in that business. It's, it's got certain definitions. So yes, it, it still requires the applicant being a person, although it can be in a corporate name.
Okay.
So see, corporation never dies, but humans die. So if a license can be issued in the name of the corporation and, and then for example, let's say if I have, I got the license and it's under the corporation and there's two partners, 50/50%, and I want to sell some of my portion to other person, then they would have to come, that person would have to come to the city, to the county and fill up the application and say that, okay, I'm buying this most percentage from, from this corporation that owns the license. And then he has to go through a background check, whatever is required by the county. And then if that goes okay, then he can be added to that corporation. And in that case, my first question saw, it's been answered, if the license can be put in on the name of the corporation.
Well, let me, let me go back. I really hadn't, you know, addressed that particular question, my own mind. But as I look at section 4-2334, it's business applications. Now, this is under the section for retail sales of alcoholic beverages for on-premises consumption. There may be different requirements depending upon the type of license that you're seeking. But I do believe, and I would be happy, I would just need a few minutes to, to look at this, but I think that whether it's, it's the applicant who has to literally qualify. Now, I don't, I don't know to answer your question if it can be technically in a corporate name, but the bottom line is, is that there has to be a responsible applicant who has to qualify.
Basically, the owners, the owners of the corporation has to be qualified.
Yes.
If I'm, if I'm making the rules, I would make a rule when, if you can, it can be on the name of the corporation, but the owners of the corporation has to do the background check and get okay from the city. That this is, for example, if I have one, if, if somebody wants to be the partner, once, for example, I got the license, I, I put it on the name of the corporation and somebody wants to, I want to sell some of my percentage from the corporation. And then that person, if he has a criminal background, of course not. He's not going to qualify.
Hey, Sam, we should put that in here.
Yeah, but if you want, if you have a corporation and so your name's, so you go and apply for the license in your name and you're a member of a corporation, I don't care if it's two guys or if it's 100 guys, you're the guy applying for the license. The corporation, you're applying in, in, for the corporation, you know, the, the, one individual. So you wouldn't have to have all the other, that, that's your, that's your business. You know, your corporation business is not the business of the, the licensing is to the individual. If you've got one partner or 10 partners, that's not, that wouldn't be our, that wouldn't, I don't think that would be our business.
Yeah.
As far as how many partners you had.
Yeah, what he's saying, if he was doing this, he would make it where he has to have a background check and if he sells his part, they would have to have a background check. He's saying he would put that.
All partners would have to have a background check.
Yes, yeah, that would be a best way to.
I don't know.
But he would be the sole license holder, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
The corporation is going to be the owner, the sole license owner, but the corporation has been.
LLC has a registered agent, wouldn't it be?
Yeah, that is exactly right, Rob. Yes.
Well, not necessarily, not necessarily, because some LLCs, the registered agent may be their attorney.
Yes.
So not all registered agents are the owners.
The owners has to be, I mean.
And plus two, the registered agent has to be within the, in the state. So you may have an owner somewhere in another state where they live, registered agent has to be in the state.
Yes, but the, the main thing is that I read it and there's not much information on, on the license part because that's, the end of the goal of any business is to sell, period. It doesn't matter which business it is. So.
So you build up the business and you're getting ready to sell it?
Sell, you can sell it, yeah. Then I have, before I got into it, I have to know because if I put million dollars or whatnot and take that liability on me, then I have to know that, oh, yeah, I'm down the road if I want to sell it, this is the process.
That, I mean, yes, it's, it's because of the nature of the business according to state law, they, they regulate alcohol both as malt beverage, as wine, and as distilled spirits. They, they just right or wrong whether we agree with state law and we have to follow state law, there are certain requirements. Now, as Patel, as I'm, as I'm looking, and I'm trying to look at this and listen to you and be responsive as well, but for example, under section 415, initial license application, you get the impression through the application shall state as to the applicant, full name, age, address, et cetera. As to the applicant's proposed outlet manager, if not the same as the applicant, full name, the exact address of the proposed business outlet. So I, I believe now upon looking at this a little closer, that really the applicant is the individual. Now, whether you have, a lot of companies will say, well, I want to set the business up as a corporation because if somebody slips and falls in my business, I, I want it to be.
Protection.
Of it being under corporation. But when it comes to the applicant, I'm now going to restate it differently than what I originally said. I do believe that the application has to be, the applicant has to be an individual.
Okay.
And so the, the commission will look at, you know, the ownership. If you come in and say, well, it's going to be operated under ABC Liquors, okay? Then they're going to say, well, who are the owners of ABC Liquors? And they may ask you to provide the breakdown. Well, you know, one person owns 30%, one owns 40%, et cetera. And, and there will be a determination of who the actual applicant is, a human being applicant, because that's who we're checking the background records of. That's who we're checking these other items. So, I mean, yes, they would, they would look at if, if ABC Corporation had a, a bad track record, that, that certainly would adversely affect that location getting bad or the applicant getting bad. But, but an applicant is going to be a, a human being and it, to the extent that I create confusion, I apologize to you.
No, it's okay.
So, you know, we're, we're sort of in the process of this being new and we'll, we'll sort of go through it. But I, I do recognize that it's a tremendous investment to start up this business, this type of business, no doubt about it. And when you go to sell it, it's not as easy as selling most other types of businesses. For example, a clothing business or a convenience store that doesn't sell alcoholic beverages because there's no state mandated regulations on it. But that's, that's what the state laws are, is, is they, they restrict that pretty tightly.
I'm not aware of the state law, but my suggestion, this is just a suggestion to the, to the government, that if you attach the license to the corporation and anybody in the corporation, any owners are there, you're, then all of them has to be background checked. If they add or remove, they can, they have to have a background check and get the okay from the county, say, no, this guy has no background check, he's good to go. Then they, they can add partners in it and add or remove or whatever it is they want to do it. That gives them the freedom of doing business. Because I come from a business background and I've been doing retail business for 25 years. So to make it easy and at the same time solve the purpose of the government, that the government wants to make sure that whoever is selling that liquor has to have a clean background. To do that, I suggest the license has to be on the name of the corporation. And that way you can mandate that every two years there, you guys can run a background check and something comes back, you can, whatever you, you can do.
I, I think that's a good suggestion. We may need to look at, at what level of minority ownership, like if somebody owns 5% and they're a passive owner, they're just in it for the investment and they don't even go in to operate the liquor store, you know, should they be subject to it or not? Or there's 20 owners, you know, the 20 owners that do. But you've made some very valid points that I, I think should be looked at further and I, I appreciate your input on that.
Yeah, because that.
I just want, yeah, I just want to make sure I understand this. So, so if, if it's a, if it's a single person, just a person applies, then this, then this question doesn't, we're not even talking, this is if it's an LLC or a business.
Basically, anybody who gets the license, 99% of the time, it's not going to be sole proprietorship. It's going to be in name of the corporation or LLC because that gives them the protection.
Right.
And they use that umbrella and then the work underneath that umbrella to do all their businesses.
So what if you have, say you've got the LLC and you've got 10, 10 partners and three of them don't pass the background check?
Then those three people cannot be in a part of the LLC, period.
So you're going to keep.
Reform the LLC.
So you're going to reform it and then come back and.
No, no, I mean.
And reapply.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, they can get, they have to be removed from the partnership.
And Mr. Patel.
For example, let's say if I have four partners, 25, 25%, and then one person, say, no, this person cannot be on the, cannot be the owner of this corporation because of these reasons, then he cannot be on there. Then they have to split 100% in between three people.
Mr. Patel, one of the benefits of public meetings is to get input, especially from people like you who have operated it.
Yeah.
Showing your interest and I appreciate that. And I want to ask you a question, if, if it's too confidential, then just tell me. But it's, if I'm understanding you correctly, do you own more than one store?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And is it, and is your business in the name of a corporation?
Yes.
Okay. And when you go, when you've gone to a different jurisdiction, because Walker County's just starting. County is just starting, when you went to, are, like, are you in Catoosa County or?
I'm in Catoosa, I'm in Walker.
Okay, so when you're in Catoosa County, um, and you fill out the application, even though you have a corporate name, do you fill out the application in your name?
Uh, corp, they ask, you, uh, they ask the name of the corporation and the EIN number and who are the partners and then they basically, uh, when I, when it comes from the, given, for example, coin, uh, uh, operating amusement machine, the COM machines that they're putting in the convenience stores, when you apply for the license for that, it's called COM, then they ask the name of the corporation, I'm talking at the state level, and then they ask, uh, who are the owners, you give them the detail of the owners, then they also, after giving the owner's name, they do the background check, not only that they check uh, any tax liabilities that you have pending with the state, uh, and, uh, they might be doing, I don't know what, what are the background checks they do, uh, they, they have to get the citizenship, if I'm a citizen or not, whatnot, you have some, all that. Um, and that's pretty much an, in the issue, the name, uh, license in the name of the corporation, not on the individual person.
Is, is your corporation solely owned by you?
Uh, no, we're two people.
Okay, so did you and your partner?
Yes, we both.
Have to submit?
Yes, yes.
Maybe the same application, but you had to list both of you as applicants?
Yes.
Okay, okay, well, I think that's, that's really good suggestion and, and I think that's how our commission would address it, but, you know, we, we want to get, uh, we realize that we're going to have to make adjustments to our ordinance as we go, but this is a great one to address and, and it'll be up to these commissioners whether to, you know, tweak that tonight. I, I think it would be a good suggestion, but that, that, they're the voting people, but yes, I mean.
It wouldn't be in conflict, you could, that's something that you could handle pretty easily.
Yeah.
Tweaking that, just, just, just the application.
Yeah, you know, that, uh.
I don't have any problem with it, I, I see what you're saying.
Shareholders of members of the corporation have to, uh, also apply, uh, you know, perhaps as co-applicants or?
See, that way you're not suffocating the business people who are investing money and then they're, they're not being suffocated by the rules and regulations. And that way it gives them the freedom and at the same time, the government has to make sure that the, whoever is running that business or has ownership in the business, they are, according to the, they have no criminal background or whatever the procedure the state or county comes up with, then that way they are satisfied and that this way the, the business lobby is also happy, the person who is investing money and running the business, they're also happy, they have flexibility of, uh, getting out whenever they want, getting, and then, and then become a partner, remove partners, whatnot they can do.
Okay, so I, I don't mean to belabor the point and they may have answered this, but I just want to clear it in my head, uh, when you file an application as, as the applicant, does it have your name or does it have your corporate?
Corporation, you, you can, you can do, I think, uh, um, it's name of the corporation, usually the business is under the name of the corporation, there are very seldomly somebody's going to have, uh, sole proprietorship, just the reason why somebody sues the business, they sue the business, uh, the person, uh, then if they're sole proprietorship, then they can go after the person. But if they, if, if, if it's under the umbrella of the corporation, then the corporation is an entity in its, in its own and then, uh, the, the owners are protected underneath the, the umbrella of a corporation.
So the actual, not business license, but the actual liquor license is in the corporation's name as well?
Well, I don't, to be honest with you, I don't own a liquor license in Georgia, but there are businesses being sold and bought in, 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 uh, in a liquor, um, and then I think it goes very by the state and city and all that. So the rules and regulations can be changed, but since you guys are drafting, so this rules and regulations, I wanted to put this and come here today and talk about it, that way the rules and regulations is not suffocating the, uh, business owners or, or business and they are free to do whatever they want, as long as they follow the standards, it's been, you guys, you draft the standards based on that.
Thank you for the comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak regarding the chapter four, the alcohol beverage? Okay, hearing or seeing no one, we're going to, to move forward. Yes, yeah, if you'd like.
Approximate dates, when can someone apply and how many, uh, applic, licenses will be per division?
Okay, now that, that is addressed in here, Shane, I believe, uh, my recollection is.
Four divisions.
We're, we're divided into districts, so there are four districts within the county and the, uh, commission can issue up to five per district.
Five licenses per district?
So, they don't have to.
Okay.
They don't have to issue five.
Okay.
But that is, would be the maximum number per district.
Okay, okay.
So, you know, it may only be that they decide to issue one or two, or maybe only one or two apply, there's also, from your perspective, sort of a supply and demand, does it make sense to open one where there's three already in my district, you know, I mean, that's a decision.
So, so max, in, in, I, in theoretical situation, that max can be, be applied with five times, five, five zones, right?
Four.
Four, so, so twenty, max.
But, but, but as he stated, a maximum of five per a district, so you could, you know, you, you couldn't have any more than five in, in one of the districts, you couldn't have six in one district and four in another.
Okay.
So it would be, that would, that would go with the district, five per.
So.
It would be the maximum and that's, that's just a cap that we, we thought would be a good cap to start with, you know, to see where it went from there.
So in theory, twenty, max, in all, when you come back.
Countywide.
Countywide.
In the whole Walker County, it's going to be twenty? No more than twenty.
No more than twenty.
Oh, you're asking the whole walk.
Yes, in the whole county.
Whole county.
That, that's the cap, that's, that's.
Okay.
Keep, keep in mind that we do not have control over the incorporated portions.
The cities.
So if you're within the city limits of any of our towns.
No, I understand.
That's their business, some cities may allow sales, some may not allow sales.
Yeah, okay, no, and approximate dates will be a month, maybe three, four months down the road, we should have.
What can we feel out there?
We don't, that's, we got, until we get it, I don't think we've got a date in there, we've got to get the, uh, we've got to get the ordinance adopted and then we got to get the fee scheduled and we're going to look at it.
It would be real, really soon.
Yeah, that, that's what I was going to say, is what we're trying to do, and that's great input and it's that, what you've said is something that we can insert, he can take care of that for, we're trying to get this thing in so that we can get you guys up and running.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So we, we, that's what we're trying to do and we're trying to keep it fairly simple so that it's not such a complicated process to, to do business in the county. So your, your point's very good to help us and, and, but, but we're trying to keep it to where it makes it, uh, entices you to do business here and makes it more simple versus, you know, an ordinance that thick.
Yeah, you know, so.
You've seen them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, last call, if you want to speak about the alcohol ordinance?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Hypothetically, please. If I were, if I were to have a corporation with five partners and we had ten million dollars and I got, and I put the license in my corporation, can my corporation open five stores?
Well, first of all, there is a requirement that for the first year, you can only have one license.
Right, and whilst I, I'll take.
And then there are limitations on the number, so, uh, I would assume that the commission would look at how many are already in district one, you know, um, you know, so there, there are different parameters that may.
So if we designated one person in that corporation of five and they carry, does that, does that one license in that corporation count for everything? They would have to have one for each.
You have to have a separate license for each physical location.
And that's state law.
Yeah, okay.
Good question, Carl.
Yes, sir.
Is it going to be a drawing? A lottery, a draw. Is it going to be drawing, lottery drawing or what?
Think we've talked, we've talked about more the first come, first served.
Camper, camper, for a while.
If you would come up to the front.
Yeah, please.
We're recording this and sometimes it's difficult to us to be able to go back and go down the recording.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
I live in Florida and I, I applied the license when they did and the, the, there was so much confusion, uh, to start with. Uh, the confusion we had is they, they allowed multiple applications for one location. Okay, uh, so is that going to be okay with you or okay with the county or no?
So, so basically what you're saying, if there's a place for sale or for rent, you in theory could have multiple people trying to get a license before they secured or rented that location or bought that location?
I think they'd have to have their locate, I think that's part of the permitting, the license, is they have to state where it is and the, the address and all that, so they'd have to have that, uh, procured before they would.
Have to have it.
That's, that's correct.
Okay, John, thank you.
So they would already have to have a lease.
A lease or, or, yeah, or a piece of property that they were going to build on, you know, to.
That was commercial.
So you, that way you not have.
I give, I give you an example, okay, my, I own a land on a Bed of Parkway, I, I basically, I applied and I also had father people apply on that land, basically.
The land that you owned?
Yep. But, but to increase your chances in drawing, what are you going to do?
It's a lottery draw.
So that's a lottery, yeah, you, you had a bunch of people all drawing for the same address.
Yeah, and then whoever gets it, I'm going to sell it to the, the land to them.
We're not doing a lottery draw, we're doing first come, first served.
How come that's going to be possible? That, that's, I don't think that's a good idea, that you're going to have people running over each other over that.
Can I say something addressing this? So we had talked with Joe earlier about this situation, first come, first served, so in the planning office, the goal was to timestamp and get them to initial it as well, date, time, because you're saying first comes, first serves, so I guess the fear is, you know, a line waiting out front and then someone saying, hey, I come at twelve o'clock, well, I come at one o'clock, so the goal now, until we get something in stone, is to date it, time it, and then also get the applicant to initial or sign it as well, showing that, so they can't come back and say, no, I was there at ten o'clock.
Right.
You know, so one of those things, so that's just a little thing we're trying to put in place, just to get a handle on it because it, you know, like you said, it's kind of new, um, we had spoken with Joe earlier to try to get an idea of, some ideas on what to do, so as of now, that's what we've come up with. And of course, their suggestions moving forward to make it better, but that's just a good idea, just to say, hey, because everybody's going to want this and it's going to be a, a madhouse to try to get in first and so first come, first served, that way you can't come back and say, no, I was here Tuesday, no, you know, just to eliminate all the nonsense on that end.
And I, and I would, I would add this though, what, what, I think, and I think that we'd all agree that once everything is, is hashed out and we're ready to go, there'll be notice put out, uh, ahead of time so that it's, it's a fair, you know, that people know when, when applications will start to be accepted.
I, I really suggest that not to do the first come, first served.
That's right, well, I agree that.
Well, we're not going to do a lottery, we're not going to do that so we can, so we can stack the deck, we're not going to do that, so.
Let's let him come up and speak.
Don't come up.
Please, don't do first come, first served.
What do you recommend?
I recommend, for example, let's say you decide, first of all, the government has to decide that on the district, how many applications, how many licenses they want to give, okay? The initial phase, initial phase you want to give for, for example, district A, you want to give three licenses max right now to start with. Then it has to be lottery, it cannot be first come, first basis because it will create a big chaos because people fighting, will fight over getting there first. It's, it has to be lottery.
That's what we have to share.
No, no, it's not a good idea to, I mean, that's my suggestion, but decision is going to be yours, but I humbly request not to do that.
Well, like I said, we, we, we can look, but, but the lottery, uh, like I said, that's, that's a stack in the deck thing and it takes a lot of people out of even having a chance. And we're, we're trying to promote free enterprise.
We can talk about that and come up with a criteria.
See, City of Florida did the lottery, City of Florida did the lottery and they had a third party coming in the, the day of the drawing, they had a third party coming in and they, uh, uh, they, I think they gave one number to us and then, yeah, and then, uh, put the, another number in, who, and the number comes out, that's, that's the person who got the license. The fairest way is to do that, that way somebody's not punished because of he's few minutes late, where he deserved the license too.
But is that punishment because it, it, and I'm just asking, I, I, I'm, because I'm understanding, but so, you know, even, and I'm just trying to think of a, an example that's, that's, uh, kind of works with this, but, you know, you say, and, and, and I know it's totally, two totally different things, but if, if, if there's a special, like a, a big special going on at, at a, a place, they're going to, like a Black Friday sale.
Mm-hmm.
People know that and they just, and if they choose to send it, there's people that sit for days to wait on concert tickets, camp out, set up tents and live for a week so that they can buy a ticket. So, and, and that's a fact, I mean, that happens all over the country. So what's it, you know, if we, if you know the date and you know that when it, when it becomes available, how, how. I just don't see a mad dash.
Five people, if, if me and all, everybody out there at the same time standing with the application, who are you going to choose?
What would you, what'd you say, is, is first come, first served?
Yeah, but we're all standing five outside, before, let's say if I come here at four AM, you're going to accept it, application at, at nine AM and then we all there since they're four AM. It's, it'll create more chaos, trust me.
If you're all members of the same corporation?
It doesn't matter. The best way, and that way there's no questions and there is no, uh, fighting over this, that I was here first and I was this, it's better to do the lottery, that's my suggestion and I'm going to leave it at that.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, what else?
I think the lottery.
If, if I understand this right, when they apply for application, they can only do one in their name in all twenty openings, so there's, uh, opportunity for nineteen more people to get one, correct? Right. So he can't, he can't buy just ten locations. So you, so you, the max people, if you sold all twenty at one time, there'd be, there'd be twenty people.
Twenty different people.
Another question, if I apply in district A, can I apply in all the district or if I apply in district A, I cannot apply?
One, you can only apply for one license in the whole county and one name.
On, on a one name, on a, uh, one district, or I can apply in district A, B, C, and D?
One license in whole county.
Whole county, okay, I got you.
Please state your name, we can get a copy.
My name is Earl Wilson and my first question is, under state law, you know, we're talking about setting it up as a corporation, you had the other names under it, in the state of Georgia, can't you only own two liquor stores? Isn't that the restriction under state law? That's why Costco doesn't have them at every location, their two stores are in Atlanta, Georgia, they're locked out from putting one at every Costco unless they do it under a franchise. Is that not correct under state law?
I, I don't know, but we researched that.
We don't know the answer to that.
Two, so you, these guys are familiar with that, two in the whole state?
Two in the whole state, same way in Tennessee, several states are like that. Have, has anybody thought about reaching out to the state and asking them what's the best way to go about this since you're going to allow the opportunity for twenty licenses to be, uh, I guess, acquired by individuals here?
I think we're learning tonight that that's probably a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think anybody's done that.
Okay, yeah, an example. Ringo, when they did theirs, the city of Ringo, they took in 190 applications, it's $600 a throw. They drew two names out of a hat. They kept the extra $54,000 as revenue for the city. Everybody was perfectly happy with that. They knew the risk that there would be two people that would get a liquor store in the limits of the city of Ringo.
And there was 100 and how many?
190 applications that went in. And you're gonna see that here. There's gonna be people coming around from all over the place. Uh, you know, I could get six of my family members to come in and put an application in, and it'd be the same thing. But, you know, and how do you, but how do you determine if there's 100 people standing outside the door, who was there first? And which location are they, you know, what if they, you know, you know, 100 people's gonna eat up more than 20 locations. My understanding is, what you're saying is that people, once they get a store, they can't apply for another store for 365 days, correct?
Once it's open, yes.
Right, okay. Uh, you know, having done this, I, this all snowballed as a byproduct of East Ridge getting liquor stores. Theirs had to be done by petition, had to be put on the ballot, you had to have 2,500 signatures, each signature had to be verified. The minute that passed, Ringo, Fort O'Quinn, just, they, they went nuts about, okay, you got that petition passed in East Ridge, come help us get it done here. You had House Bill 154 that preempted that, and you didn't have to go through that nightmare or that headache. Uh, but East Ridge still did a lottery. They put everybody's name, what they did is they had a meeting of all those that had qualified, they brought their blueprints, their contracts, their bank financials, everything with them that night, and they had a meeting that lasted several hours, and they went through every one of those contracts. They looked at the financing, if they had an extra one, 1.5 million dollars in case there were oversubs, was that money guaranteed? There are a lot of factors that were, you know, that came into play in that. Uh, you know, it looks like to me that maybe we ought to look at tabling this for an extra meeting to gather more information, to see how we go. Uh, because as I read through this like four to five times, each time I read through it, I find something different or a different ambiguity. I think you read my email today.
I did, yeah.
And, you know, uh, you know, and it's like, to me, in section 421, it needs clarity about tastings. You say that you can taste and sample a product, or in that section, you say you can't, uh, taste or sample a product on premises. But then, in, uh, 4-14.5, it says, it gives a definition of a sample. Every liquor store I know does samples and tastings. We've done multiple tastings in 348 in Ringo, and they've been a tremendous success. Uh, we've ended up selling an extra 20 to 30 bottles of whatever they were sampling that day. And the company, various distributors furnish those people, they don't cost the business owner any money, it generates a lot of extra foot traffic, especially if you publicize it. Uh, and it's a good way for people to find out, you know, what a $200 bottle of bourbon tastes like before they go spend the money on it. And it's just, you know, a very simple, you go to your doctor, a lot of times you leave there with a sample product, correct? So, uh, you're, in 421 and 4-15.5, there was just not some clarity there that I think needs to be readdressed.
Well, 421, I sit here looking at it, we're talking about the consumption, no consumption on premises.
Premises. So that's contradicting sampling.
Well, if you're giving, if you're giving away a sample, you're not, you're not, you're not selling that sample, you're giving that sample.
No, but you're still consuming it on the premises, and that's what 421 is talking about. You can't consume product on the property. Correct?
I see your point.
Yes.
So, so the store that you're affiliated with, do you have designated hours that you have the sampling, or designated days, or how do you do the sampling?
We tried to schedule, first we have to work to the distributor. There's, I think, nine distributors that come out of Atlanta that can service liquor stores. Keep in mind, your liquor will not come out of Chattanooga. It will come out of Atlanta, Georgia, most of them are south, some as far as Savannah. So, uh, and they come this way on Mondays. So if you had an extra 20 stores, those distributors in Atlanta are gonna go nuts, because we're already seeing situations where we're getting short supply on certain products because some of the bigger, you know, the 25, 35, 45,000 square foot stores in Atlanta get priority with those distributors. There's a massive lawsuit going on with one of the distributors against one of the large liquor manufacturers now about how they're allocating product selection and things like that. It's being forced down, uh, the distributor's throat by, uh, the particular company that's involved in the lawsuit. And this lawsuit's been going on for some time. Uh, I think they're asking for 40 million in compensation. Uh, we've seen all this really stimulate as a byproduct of the, the vast demand for bourbon and the products that go with it. It's, and, I mean, they've even nicknamed the people that go from store to store, they call them bunny hoppers, because they hop from liquor store to liquor store to go walk in, and if they see a bottle of Pappy Van Winkle there, doesn't matter if it's $25,000, they're gonna buy every bottle they get their hands on.
So let me ask you this, so how do you, during the sampling process? So let's say a guy comes in and says, um, I wanna sample a Yellowstone, and I have a sample, I wanna sample a Jim Beam, and I have a sample. At what point do you say, I think you've had enough samples?
Well, okay, first of all, it, it works a little different than that. Uh, we work with the distributor and the vendor, and they determine what days they can have personnel there.
Okay.
There are usually, uh, young ladies that are in college or somebody along those lines trying to pick up extra money to support themselves. What the, uh, the samples are given in, we would say, okay, this coming, well, September the 8th, we're gonna have a sampling of, I believe, tequilas. So we'll have three different types of tequilas there. They will be sampled in sacrament cups, like you use at Catholic churches, Lutheran churches, and things like that on Sunday mornings, when you taste the wine and get the sacrament bread. Uh, there's, and usually after three of those, you don't get another for 45 minutes to an hour. You have to clear that.
So you're essentially consuming less than a teaspoon of.
Basically, it's approximately about a tablespoon, which would be maybe 10 to 15 cc's, 10 to 15 cc's. Because an ounce is 28.5 grams. Uh, most shots are considered at one ounce, which is 28.5 grams. So, uh, we'd say, okay, we're gonna sample these three, the person would come up, first thing the girl would do, I need to see your driver's license, if she suspects the person basically is 40 or under. And she looks at that, and if they're not old enough, she gives the license back and says, I'm sorry, I can't give you a taste.
Okay.
And then, you know, as the people come through and they taste, you know, they'll come by, uh, and they might try, say, a, a clear tequila, and they'll wait a few minutes to get, let that clear their palate, so forth. Some places offer salting crackers, other things like that, to cleanse your palate so that you can absorb the next taste and it not be compromised by the previous taste. Uh, and then these usually last, we advertise them, they're, they're for one day only usually, they're for, uh, basically three hours to four hours. We did one where we did a sample from three, from 1:00 to 4:00 for bird dog whiskey, and then from 4:00 to 7:00, uh, we did another product.
So you're not sampling every single day?
No.
Okay.
We do it maybe, what, once a month, if we're lucky, or sometime, if it was a real good time, twice a month. We're just learning as, we're getting into this, and, uh, and the thing about this, what's gonna hurt us, if y'all open liquor stores, we're gonna lose a lot of your customers. I mean, there's tons of people that are so happy that we're in Ringo, that they don't have to drive to Lyerly, to Dalton, to Rome, to Chattanooga, to go buy liquor. It, it's now, tax dollars are staying in the state. And, you know, I'd say, I know if, the people that come up to register, they'll say, do you know when Lefet's gonna get a liquor store? Do you know when Chickamauga's gonna get one? Uh, what about south of Lefet, near Tryon or Chautauqua County? It's got an opportunity there that nobody's really looked at.
Several just opened one, and then there's one that's fixing to go into town of Tryon.
Right. And so, you know, it, it's a different market in today's time, and you also gotta look at generational changes, because the generations, uh, how many of you here are familiar with IPAs, or who has ever heard of Momwater? Momwater. Momwater, it's a product that we cannot keep in stock. It's 4.5% alcohol, there's no carbonation in it. If you take a drink of it, it's like taking, tasting a Seven Up that's set outside with the lid off of it for three days. It's flat. But these things are selling for $25 an eight pack, and we're selling them as fast as we can get them in. But those are the people that are aged, 21 to 30 years of age. Then you got your 31s to 40s that are looking, they're buying the IPAs, the odd craft beers and things like that. In your terms, you have growler written there. Growlers are gone. Nobody buys a growler anymore. Uh, it's just, you know, come in, buy a case, yeah, they'll buy the cases of beer, ginger beer. It's non-alcoholic. You need it for Moscow mules. And that was one of the questions I had to put forth to the chairman today, was are we gonna be able to sell ginger beer if we got more license for, uh, Walker County? Because it's just something, Moscow mules are very in vogue, you can even now buy them by a couple of different companies that are in the cans. So, uh, there's just a lot of things that, you know, none of us really knew what was gonna happen till we got in there, rolled up our sleeves, and went to work.
Well, I, I think that, I learned a lot from you last time, and I, and I think that what we're seeing, and that we'd all agree, is there, there, there is, there's a lot of different facets. What, what we've tried to do is, and just like we were asked earlier about, you know, what kind of timeframe, we're, we're just trying to, to get a, to get an ordinance that's, that's doable, workable, and, and it's all, everything, it, it changes, you know? Like you said, as time progresses, it needs to be up. Uh, and, and so I think, you know, what we're trying to do is, is, is to move things forward so we can, so we can get more people into business. Now, we can complicate it, and we can, there's things that we do need to definitely define that we've talked about. And then there's the weeds that we can get into that really, I, I don't know, that have a lot to do with the operation of it. You know, a lot of that could be how you personally choose to run your, your store and things like that, so.
Because this is a free enterprise business.
Well, that's, that's exactly why, and that's exactly what we're trying, that's what, exactly what we're trying to protect, is a free enterprise.
And what we're, we're hoping to accomplish out of this whole process is keep as many sales and tax dollars within the county of Walker as possible. And, you know, you've got the, the 21 to 30 year olds, they're, they're totally different. A lot of them, they've got good jobs, they're making money, uh, and they're a high percentage of our business in Ringo. I would say, if you looked at our client base, more women shop in our store than men do. And that caught me really off guard when we first opened up, because a lot of times I just stood back and watched and interacted with the customers, answered questions, and I learned a lot from them about their business. You know, we keep a, a notebook where if somebody answers something, we try to order it. That's the way I was raised, and the people that I work with, that's what they believe in, is, you know, get as much money as you can, stop people from buying on the internet, build back your community through, through the sales tax revenues, and various things like that. Uh, I spent seven years on a beer board in East Ridge, and my whole purpose of being on that beer board was to change the guidelines of where they were locking businesses out, where you couldn't get a nice restaurant, because there's 52 churches on Ringo Road. You can't swing a dead cat without hitting a church. But there was not enough land to put the space between me, because they had theirs at 500 foot, where yours is 300, which is more reasonable. Um, there's just a lot of factors that come into play, and like your alcoholic beverage commission, if there's, if they, I don't know what your sunshine laws are about, if they could come as a group and take a tour through the store with it closed, I'd be glad to meet them down there early one morning, walk them through it, let them see, you know, the thing, show them the point of sale system, how you can take a driver's license, put it up there, let it scan it, tell you whether that person's 21 or not, whether that's a valid license, whether it's forged, fake, or whatever. Uh, see the stockroom, tell them, you gotta keep them, because with getting your stuff out of Atlanta, you don't know what you're going to get. Your beer distributors come out of Rome. Uh, your Coca-Cola and Pepsi, they come out in different sections. Everybody thinks, well, you know, because we're so close to Chattanooga, everything comes out of Tennessee, it doesn't. And, and there's just a lot of challenges. And Mondays is the hardest day for us at the store, because on Mondays, we went from one delivery truck the first week we opened to five. That's how much business has grown in a short period of time we've been up.
That's the business we wanna see in Walker County.
Well, that's what we'd like to help you put here.
And, and your, and your inputs have been very helpful.
So any, and he, I asked him to share my phone number, my email, if there's any time you all have a question, you wanna come down individually. I know there's laws that govern you about coming in pairs or as a group that, you know, says you can't do that because you might discuss other things. Uh, I understand that, that's why I'm willing to come down at 8:00 one morning, unlock the door, let's walk through it, let you see the registers, let you touch products, let you see how we blend. I mean, in your guidelines, you've not established one thing that's in compliance with ADA guidelines. Have you noticed that about the building requirements and restrictions?
Building, uh, John, would you address that? Now, the building has to be, if it's a commerc- that commercial building will be, they have to be, uh, ADA. Uh, he said we don't have anything in there to, to establish ADA guidelines. The IR, the, the building code, the building code covers that.
ADA, ingress, ingress, and then the registration.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's covered by the building code.
Like the width of the aisles to accommodate wheelchair, or something like that. Nowhere in this does it give any of those dimensions or guidance.
Well, that's gonna be regulated off just, uh, build here, IBC, International Building Code. We're on 2018 code cycle, so.
Because most wheelchairs are 36, and our aisles, I think our aisles are 44 inches wide.
They need to be the same.
Right, and everybody that comes in says, you know, I've been into liquor stores in 30 of the 50 states we have, they compliment us on how clean our store is, the width of the aisles, where they're not bumping into stuff and knocking things off and breaking things. Our floor is a very thick rubber vinyl, so a bottle falls, most of the time it does break on the floor. Uh, we have plenty of egress, we have, uh, two front doors, we have two back doors where people could get out in case of a fire. You can stand at the front of the store and look all the way through to the back, even though our shelves are running horizontal where you're wishing for yours to be perpendicular. That, you know, that's functional, and I understand that.
Yeah, there'll all be stuff that's, that's inspected and approved from the building department, also from the fire marshal as far as life safety regulations as well. Those have to be drawn, as they're submitted and approved by the planning office prior to construction as well.
But, you know, I would really encourage you to look at an alternative way other than first come, first served, because when the word goes out that you're gonna start accepting applications, and I'll use an example of October the 1st, when that door unlocks that morning, you're gonna see probably well over 100 people lined up wanting a liquor store, because everybody thinks, well, I can get a liquor store, and they sitting there is 1,500 square feet, I can take all my retirement and fulfill one of my dreams of having a 1,500 foot square, or 1,500 square foot liquor store. Those stores are not gonna make enough money to survive.
Well, that, that's their choice.
That's their choice, but I agree, but do you want businesses to?
I think it's kind of how you operate your business. If a business isn't surviving, the ones that are operated properly.
Well, but the way the liquor companies and the distributors set the deals up, an example, we had to buy 750 cases of Jack Daniels to get in at a reasonable price. If you've got a 1,500 square foot store, you're only gonna have 1,250, or what, 1,350 for the sales floor, and 150 stockroom, 750 cases of Jack Daniels eats up at stockroom.
But if you have, if you have a store that size, if you choose to have something that size, then, then you, you may not be as competitive as, as the, the big, the big mom store.
Come spend a day, come spend a day in a liquor store and listen to how much people complain about the price. I have people every day say, I can get that for a dollar cheaper on Rossville Boulevard.
I'd send them on up.
Well, uh, we tell them, you know, that's your option, but.
You know, and people can, I mean, that's, that's in anything you're selling or buying, you know?
Right, it is.
People are complaining about the price, or compare, or drive further or not, but, People are complaining about the price or compare or drive further or not, but, I mean, I get it, I see what you're saying.
And, you know, so, and your optimal goal is not to piss people off, it's to make them happy so they'll come back. One happy customer is worth two hundred and fifty customers in the future. I think you're familiar with that from your previous retail businesses that you had. And it's just something that, you know, is, it's one of those intangibles that nobody thinks about till they, they walk into the swamp that's half full of alligators. And, you know, you got to deal with those things and it's a very time-consuming and tedious thing, you know, like on the days on Sunday when we open, there's six cars sitting in parking lot before I ever get there. And, you know, and through the week it's that way. We open at ten, there'll be four or five cars sitting in the parking lot. We bring our deliveries in through the front door because it's just, it's very, those trucks when they're full, I mean, there's a lot of trips to be made back and forth. And you can't take your eyes off the trucks because people, when they're unloaded, somebody come up and steal two or three cases out of the back of the truck that comes out of Atlanta.
Well, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else that wants to speak on the alcohol beverage? Yes, sir. Come on up. I saw Eddie try to trip you, so I think he owes you an apology. Please state your name.
My name is Priyank Patel. I got a store down one thirty-six, a lot of you guys know me by Yank. Just had a quick question. So, I just have, there's going to be a lot of people applying for this, right? My suggestion is, I've been here in Walker County since two thousand and six, okay? Had business for whatever years, I can't calculate right now, but why can't people that are in Walker County that had businesses since so long, at least ten years?
This is nineteen ninety-two.
Okay, so, I'm just saying like, why can't we get a chance first? Because we are the ones that pay taxes throughout all these years and we should be the ones.
I was thinking that earlier. I would rather do something like that than I had a lottery. And, and they're talking about two hundred people applying for two licenses. But when you're talking about that, you've got five people applying at one address and they're applying at five hundred addresses. So, if they know they're going to be able to get a license, there's not going to be five hundred people apply for five addresses. You saw what I'm saying, it's a lot of duplicates that's not going to apply because there's, they know they're going to get a license, it's not a lottery system, which is going to cut down on the fee, but, I mean, I don't think that's our goal is to figure out. Our goal is to help our business owners that's been in our community.
For Yank and Yogi.
That have been in Walker County.
You should have the first priority, you know?
I've been here since the first two thousand.
Because there's going to be a lot of people that's going to be coming out of, a lot of people from out of the county or Chattanooga to come over here.
And if we have a license left and somebody wants to come down there, it's free enterprise. But in my mind, these guys were one of the best in our county before it was just, so why should they not get an license?
I think that's some good points, I think that's some stuff we need to consider. And that's why we have these public meetings and glad that y'all come out to speak because it's, it's good input for us because this is new to us.
Yeah, that would kind of help us, I mean.
If we all are, can be available for the, for the county if they need to hear about any rules or regulations, our input will be ready to, we can give information. You guys can call us and we all be here and we can discuss and debate on things and that way we can, you can hear the issues we get from the business side based on that if you make the rules or regulations, they'll be perfect. They will, they will be good for the government and for the business.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move forward on our agenda. And this time is our public comments of anyone that would like to speak. We do limit on this to five minutes. If anyone would like to speak on any other county government topic, yes, sir, Mr. Randy?
Good evening, guys. My name's Randy Pittman, I represent the.
You bring the whole posse out here.
Yeah, the Walker County Historic Preservation Commission. I'm joined by my fellow commissioner, Eddie Upshaw, and our vice chairman, Alan Slaven.
This guy makes me feel small, doesn't he?
Tell us good luck.
But anyways, let's hurry up since I've only got five minutes. We're going to talk about history instead of liquor. As we know, the hundred and sixtieth anniversary of the.
We get one's attention, please.
The Battle of Chickamauga is up on us. We're six weeks out today for when they start registering for the Battle of Chickamauga. The commission, we're going to redo this map. We'll be adding a couple places, like for instance, the African-American Museum and Park here in Lafette. It's new to our community, so we're going to add that. On the back, we have seeked out business owners and sponsors to pay for this so we can showcase our own businesses. We're going to give a thousand of these away during the reenactment. But we're also going to print enough off so we can put them out in the community after the fact, so when we got people coming through, they can pick it up and come to Wardlaw's to eat or Wanda's or whatnot. Let's see, school day is on Friday. We plan on having a thousand wooden nickels made. One side will have Walker Rocks, other side will have our Historic Preservation Commission seal. Refrigerator magnets, I forget how many they said we're going to have done of that. It's going to be of the Brotherton Cabin at the park, I think is what he said, for refrigerator magnets. The fire department was gracious enough, Eddie worked on that to provide water buffaloes.
And, yeah, I don't know.
Stop the animals.
No, no, I know, we had a meeting the other day and I was sitting there by halfway asleep and the guy said he got everything but water buffalo. I'm thinking, this is not cap on any of this. Do you know what I mean? So then I had to ask what was a water buffalo? And I called the fire chief. Yeah, so the fire chief gave me a good lesson on what a water buffalo.
Yeah, right now, as of Monday, there was a hundred and sixty reenactors registered. The last time I spoke to y'all, there was thirty-three cannons. Now there's forty cannons with plus-two mule draw cannons, so there'll be mules drawing that. They didn't have a good information on the infantry, how much infantry, it's going to be big on the infantry. So, if y'all have any questions, reach out to any of us, Chairman Culpepper. If you need any information, it's chickamauga160.com and you can get all the information you need about that.
So, I have a quick question. So, would the wooden nickels go to the reenactors as a memento or?
Well, our plan was to give them out during school day. Right now, the guys over the campaign said they got four schools designated. Now, we can have more printed off and get to the reenactors as well, you know, but that's up to y'all, you know, on how y'all help us fund that.
They did say, what, they got reenactors from twenty-two states? I mean, that's awesome.
And the restaurant fifty a day and cutoff is, I think, the fourteenth, fifteenth of September. So, and I think they originally figured they was going to have twenty-two reenactors, twenty-two hundred reenactors.
You figure all those people coming to Walker County?
Yeah.
Yep. They're bringing families.
Yeah.
Bringing friends.
Appreciate what y'all do. Y'all, y'all been a very good commissioner and very faithful to lead and keep things doing, so thank you for that.
And we want to thank, we want to thank you guys for having us out, you know, with y'all and getting prepared for and everything like that. So, again, thank you for, for supporting us on that, for supporting us.
Spread the word.
Good group effort.
Thank y'all so much.
Anyone else that'd like to speak? Okay, I think it would be in good order. We've been sitting here over two, over two hours. We're going to take a recess and then we're going to come back in just a few minutes. So, we'll take about a five-minute recess and then we'll reconvene.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, it was. It was good. Get out of your way, fella. You know you need to sit down. Okay, appreciate y'all letting us all take a break and we're going to go ahead and reconvene here. It's eight forty-three PM, so we're going to reconvene our meeting. Under new business, we have ordinance O dash zero four twenty-three to amend chapter four of the alcohol beverage, beverages of the Code of Walker County, Georgia. So, I need to read this ordinance, it's pretty short, just the first page. So, it says, an ordinance amending chapter four of the Code of Walker County, Georgia regarding alcoholic beverages to provide for an effective date to repeal any and all conflicting ordinances and part of the ordinance to, to provide for severability and to provide for other purposes, whereas the Board of Commissioners is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. And whereas on November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, Walker County voters approve a referendum to allow the governing authority to regulate the retail package sales of distilled spirits in accordance to OCGA three dash four dash forty-one A. And whereas Walker County desires to amend its alcohol beverage code to provide for licensing for retail package sales of distilled spirits along with other revisions, therefore be ordered that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, of Walker County, that chapter four of the Code of Walker County, Georgia is repealed and replaced with the following. So, we have the, the ordinance that we have talked about and then on the very, very last page to finish out, part of the ordinance, says this ordinance is effective immediately upon adoption. All ordinances are parts of the ordinance in conflict with the ordinance are hereby repealed. Number four, if any section, cause, sentence or phrase of this ordinance is held to be invalid or unconstitutional by any court, contend jurisdiction, the said holding shall in no way affect the validity of the remaining portion of the ordinance. What is the board's pleasure on this ordinance?
I said what, go ahead and add, like that first gentleman was talking about, that any owner owning twenty-five percent or more of the company be background checked, vetted through the process.
Yeah, I think too, there may be some, some need maybe to make sure that's in compliance even with state law. I think there may need to be some work possibly done on that. It's just your thoughts on that, counsel?
Well, my thought is, is that we've had a lot of good suggestions tonight and obviously you're the governing body to make the decision, but I think it would be helpful if we could get all of these into a meeting form and I could bring it back to you with, with the stuff that we've agreed to and that we've discussed, but, I mean, that's your call. But yes, I'd like to look in particular with regard to any owner twenty-five percent or more. I do think that's legal, I think that that's permissible to do that.
I think there's probably some questions too about first, first come, first served, how have we want to initiate that process?
Yeah, and there were some good points made as well about the existing, you know, businesses that have been here, that invested in the community, that have been here for many years and so, I, I think we'd be in order to table this unless anybody, until we can get some of these answers, if you're the, get an order of business on how we can.
Because there's several topics that need to be.
There's several topics need to be discussed. We want to move it forward. I was all, I'm all for it, was really ready to get this thing going until some of these new questions have come up and I think it'd be, it would probably be in the best interest of everybody to.
I think we need to hash out what we want to change in the alcohol ordinance so council can look into it. Because that don't have a thing to do with the license. This is changing ordinance. We have to set a date to release a license.
And, and that was a question that I, that I wanted to ask counsel is, can we, is, because we're adopting amending the ordinance, period, you know, the old ordinance is being amended. Would, would it be out of line to adopt that and then make the corrections? Because we know we're going to be adopting a new ordinance and making the corrections or is it, or is it best to, to table?
My recommendation is, is we already have one ordinance in place and that I think we need to keep that ordinance in place and then table with some of these alcohol licenses and stores and get their input and then come back to y'all for taking any suggestions that you want to have added. But I think that there are some, also some issues just for me to gather the information and then bring back to y'all. I think, you know, I think one of the most telltale things is that the people who are here tonight are the people who are the potential business owners and they're the ones who are saying, can we take a time out and have, have a meeting with you before you enact it? So, we aren't going to be hurting the people who are trying to operate businesses. They're all in favor of, of tabling it based on my brief conversations with them. So, I would recommend just tabling this and, you know, I understand the frustration that this was passed last November. I get that.
Yeah, it's been, yeah, last November.
And that we don't want to be, you know, to drag things out.
One advantage too, excuse me, one advantage too of tabling this, that it automatically gets placed on the agenda in two weeks to be taken up. If we were to pass this and say, well, now we're going to come back and define the process of obtaining the license, then we've got to advertise again and have two more public hearings and it's going to kick that process down.
Yeah, what I was trying to say is we need to tell him what changes we would like and then table it. So, we already have the discussion, but if we don't discuss it and table it, then we got to discuss it two weeks. So, we just put off for two weeks.
Sure, no, that makes total sense. So, yeah, we can, we can give counsel some guidance and some things of.
Yeah.
Any result objectives, he can figure out how to get legalese and then also there can still be some discussion that the attorney can have with some of the stakeholders in the community.
And then get back with us and give us that information. So, 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 motion to table.
Yeah, so we have a, so we have a motion to table by Commissioner asking, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart. So, now let's have further discussion about what additional things you would like to, our counsel to work on.
Clarify sampling. That was one point that was brought up.
Yeah, I would, I would say tasting by the distributing company only. Like, they could only have tastings on the days that the distributors come up. If you define that in there, then they can't just say, well, we're going to open this bottle and let people sample it. It has to be by the distributor.
Ah, makes sense.
And you're going to clarify about, kind of about the application, on that application as far as the LLC or the individual, kind of get us some guidance on that as well?
Yes. We were going to look at possibly ranking some of our current business owners?
Yes, yes, we need, definitely need to look at that, people who have vested interest in it been here.
With regard to a multi-person LLC, do we want to, let's just say there's six of them with different percentages, should all of those people be background checked? Because in a sense, they're a member of that corporation, which means they'll be a hard owner in that store. They won't necessarily be the name on the license, but they will be part of that entity.
Well, Commissioner Blakewar suggested having sort of an objective criteria of anybody who has a twenty-five percent or more ownership interest. I think that that has a lot of merit to define a percentage, whether it's twenty-five or, or whatever, because somebody could have a miniscule interest and really, you know, never walk in the store.
Sure.
But, but, so that would be my thought, you know, perhaps look at a percentage stake ownership.
Yeah, and I just threw that number out there. If y'all think it should be lower or higher, we, we can debate it.
Then we had the section four dash twenty-one on the consumption on premises where we had a conflict in the document about that.
That's definitely the taste.
Yeah, it's part of the tasting, part of that.
And then we were, we were going to look at this selective process of lottery versus first come, first served, is that going to be?
Yeah, we need to look at, gather some information and just look at how, what other options are there because I, I'm not sure the lottery is the way to go and the first come, first served seems to be, so there's, I'm sure there's other, other selective methods out there. Like we were talking about, about rank, you know, maybe a way that established businesses are going to have a preferential option, then we'd have to have a way of ranking that or establishing that. So, we, we need to look into that.
Yeah, I will, I will discuss with them, they, you know, they have some good thoughts and we can look at other local jurisdictions who have recently implemented, not because we have to follow, but sometimes as guidance, as, as good suggestions that aren't tearing the turf where we can roll down the road.
Absolutely.
Those are the notes that I had.
Yeah, that was, what I had was twenty-five percent or more in tasting by distributor of company. Yeah, that was, what I had was 25% or more in tasting by distributor or company only.
That's, that's a start. Okay, any other? Okay, so we had a motion, and a second, we've had a discussion. All in favor of tabling the ordinance, say aye. Any against? Hearing none? This ordinance is tabled into our next meeting and be placed back on the agenda. Okay, next we have Resolution R. 3123, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to revise the schedule of fee for alcoholic beverage licenses, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County desires to revise the licensing fee for selling alcoholic beverages, whereas the board has the authority to set the said fee pursuant to the Walker County Code of Ordinances, whereas the board recently amended Chapter 4 of the County Code of Ordinances to establish new licenses for retail package sales of distilled spirits, manufacturing of distilled spirits, and wholesale of distilled spirits in a room service of alcoholic beverages. Therefore be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, that the fees associated with the alcohol beverage license shall be set forth in Exhibit A, heretofore made part thereof. B, further resolve the license issue prior to September 30th for retail package sales of distilled spirits only will be valid through September 30th, 2024. It may be in the best interest for us to table this one as well, since it references that we recently amended the Chapter 4 of the Code of Ordinances, and since we tabled that, we've not done that. It'd be my recommendation that we table this as well.
I would, I would agree with that. I think setting the fees in, we, I heard some, some talk also about, you know, there's gonna be a license fee, but then there could also be, you know, the fees that would be associated with applying. So we, you know, application fee that would be separate of the, when you actually got the license. So, so yeah, we'd probably, I think it would be in order to, as well, to table that.
Do you make that motion?
I'll, I'll put that in the form of a motion to table that as well, and revisit it at our next meeting as well.
Commissioner Askew's made the motion to table that. We have a second.
I'll second that.
A second by Commissioner Hart to table the Resolution R. 31-23. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are tabled on that one as well. Next item on our agenda is the Animal Assistance Service Agreement with the Georgia Department of Corrections. This is our second year of this agreement, and this is where we work in collaboration with the Georgia Department of Corrections facility here in Walker County, where we take animals from our animal shelter, and they have people there that are trained to train animals. From obedience standpoint, it's been a very successful program, and it helps us with our adoption of animals, because the animals go and stay there around the clock for several weeks and go through obedience training, and then that animal becomes a more adoptable animal, because it's had all of its vetting, it's been spayed or neutered, and it has been through obedience training. And it just makes it a much more desirable pet for the, for the family to bring in, knowing that it's gone through the obedience. So this is just the renewal of that service agreement. It's an annual service agreement, but either party does have the option to, to get out of this agreement without cause and for any reason. So it gives a lot of latitude there, but the state does like to renew this every year. So I know our counsel has reviewed this, are there any questions or concerns on this?
Motion to approve?
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion curious. Okay, at this time on our agenda, we have for Commissioner comments, and we'll start with Commissioner Blakemore.
Appreciate everybody coming out and getting involved, your feedback's what helps us make better informed decisions. And if we can help in any way, call, text, or email, thank you.
Hey, guys, hard to follow, guys, I'm telling you, the participation's awesome. We've learned a lot, it's huge for the public to come and help us with all the different issues, not just alcohol issue, but it's good to hear from everybody. Do wanna shout out always to our employees, our department heads, our employees out there that are kicking it every day, getting it done. And just be mindful, the school has started back, so watch the little ones, pay attention on the road. Let's, let's try to be safe out there, okay?
Commissioner Hart?
I'd like to thank Bobby and Carter for getting Manning Mill Road fixed. My phone bill down about $20 a month, so thanks for that. We lost two important people in our community last week. I'm gonna mention one that Robert talked about, Ruth Bass, who ran our housing authority for 33 or four years, passed away too early in life from cancer. And she was a real asset to the community and just helped countless numbers of people in her life there, and she'll be greatly missed, and I'll let Robert tell that to Coach Chapel.
Thanks, sir. So appreciate everyone coming out tonight, great dialogue, great discussion, so thank y'all. Thank everybody on the Historical Preservation Board that came out, you guys are doing a jam-up job. And just wanna thank our employees, you, you guys do a great job. Just appreciate your service to the county and your hard work. And like Brian mentioned, Coach Chapel passed away last week, and Coach Chapel was just an icon in our community. He was a longtime educator, a principal, he was a veteran of the Korean era. And he touched the lives of myself, you, Shannon, Mark, I mean, you knew the family, Robert. So, so just a tremendous guy. I know he instilled in, in his players a sense of pride, a sense of, of winning, a sense of being a, a good citizen, and not only on the, on the gridiron, but in, in life in general. And he was a huge inspiration in my life, and I know y'all can say the same. He was a great man and will certainly be missed. So, Shannon, back to you.
Very good, thank you. This has really been a great meeting tonight. This is the way local government should always function, when people can come in and speak, and we can have dialogue, and learn from each other, and have a sense of community, and a sense of people working together for growth and for the betterment of the community. So, all of y'all that have been here, I know it's been a long meeting, but, and I know some had to already leave, but just a thank you to everyone that has participated. And I think you see, we are listening to the comments, we don't just take it and just, you know, let it roll off and move on, like everything's already been decided. So thank you for being here and being engaged. And I hope there's other issues and concerns in our community as time goes forward that you'll also get engaged in and be a part of. Because when we can come and work together as a community, we just end up with a better, better outcome and a better community. So thank you for that. Also, I'd like to say, I had the pleasure of also working with Ruth Bass on the library board for several years. Coach Chapel was my high school principal for four years at Gordon Lee High School, and just a legend in our community, and will be greatly missed. And I don't know of anybody that spent any time with him much at all that he didn't have a very positive impact on their life, myself included. He had a very positive impact, and a person that I always highly respected. And he's just the type of guy that was very easy to respect.
Very easy to respect.
Man's man.
He really is, so, very good, thank y'all for, for those comments. We do have a, a couple of needs for an executive session, so I'd like to make the motion, we go in executive session to discuss real estate and personnel. So I make that motion, do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none? We stand adjourned until after our executive session, and then we'll be back out to close out our meeting. Joe run everybody off.
What'd you do, Joe? Got your cheese? Excuse me.
Okay, we're gonna call our meeting back to order, it's Thursday, August the 10th, at 9:50 PM. We've come out of our executive session, there's no further business out of executive session, so we need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Blakemore, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.